Good evening, everybody. This is the Lakeville Select Board meeting, also acting as the Wage and Personnel Board as needed. It is January 10th, 2022. I believe this is our first meeting of the year, so Happy New Year, I guess, is in order to everyone else in Lakeville land. In accordance with provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the January 10th, 2022 Public Meeting of the Lakeville Select Board will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam and you should not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will also be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecom.tv. So, right away, we're going to go to Select Board announcements. So, the Council on Aging will be holding a blood drive for the American Red Cross on Monday, January 31st, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. For information on making an appointment, please visit the town's website homepage under Community Events. I'm sure you can call the Council on Aging, too. Our town clerk, Lillian Drain, would like to remind residents that anyone may be interested in running for a position in the annual election. Nomination papers are available starting today at the town clerk's office. Please call ahead, (508) 946-8800, to make an appointment to request nomination papers between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. Thursday, oh, I'm sorry, Monday through Thursday and 8:00 a.m. until noon on Fridays. You can also go to the town clerk's page and look under News on the webpage, the town's website. She also asked me to let folks know some of the upcoming dates for everything. So nomination papers are available starting today. Last day to submit those nomination papers is Monday, February 14. Last day for registrars to file certified nomination papers with the town clerk is February 28. Last day to withdraw your nomination is March 2nd, and the annual town election is Monday, April 4th, 2022. And that's the election that we do in the middle of the day, sort of. 12:00 noon to 8:00 p.m. at the lodge building at Ted Williams Camp. Voter registration, town clerk's office, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m., same hours to 4:30 p.m. Fridays, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The final registration for this election is Tuesday, March 15th, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's the last day you can register. Absentee ballots are available until Friday, April 1st. I think that's it on the election. She just would like folks to please be sure to reach out, make an appointment if you are interested in getting nomination papers. Let's see. Last announcement that I have is Middle Borough Housing Authority will be holding an information session regarding six new affordable homeownership units located at the residences at Namasket River on Riverside Drive and Rivers Edge Way in Lakeville on January 11th, which is tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. Please visit the town's website on the homepage under News to get more information on how to attend the information session or how to get an application to apply for one of those units. Applications are either due or must be postmarked by February 10th at 2:00 p.m. So if you'd like to get into those affordable homeownership units, you need to reach out to Middle Borough Housing Authority ASAP. Do either of the selectmen have anything else? I don't have anything at this time.
Okay.
I'm all set, Madam Chair.
Okay. Next, we have Town Administrator announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'm going to start off with the unfortunate refrain that COVID case loads are still very high in town. We encourage everyone to protect themselves by masking, distancing, getting vaccinated. To that end, the town will be holding a vaccine clinic on Wednesday, January 12th, at the fire station from 4:00 to 7:00. And we're also going to start providing drive-through testing twice a week for town residents at the Lakeville Senior Center on Mondays and Wednesdays from 9:00 to 12:00. We encourage everybody to take advantage of those opportunities. The town has drop-off services available outside Town Hall. We are, Town Hall is still open, is open for business, but we ask everybody to follow our direction to wear masks inside and to exercise social distancing. The drop-off services certainly help with that. Residents can drop off census forms, dog licenses, voter registrations, and pay their taxes all through the drop-off. My proposed budget will be presented to the board on January 24th. We'll have department reviews taking place on February 8th, 9th, and 10th. We invited the Finance Committee to join us at the budget meetings as well with the departments on the 8th, 9th, and 10th, and looking forward to getting that process underway. I'm pleased to pass along that the town has been awarded a municipal cybersecurity grant from the state. This program includes a series of training modules and threat simulations intended to help employees and officials learn to navigate online risks more effectively. As far as we know, we'll have enough licenses for everybody, so it'll be a good opportunity for everybody to learn some good online hygiene. And finally, as you alluded earlier, Madam Chair, the Board of Selectmen is now officially the Select Board. We have, people will notice on the website that the titles have changed. We're gradually working through various forms and policies, and there'll be an issue through the codification as well as we go along, but we're getting that underway. That's all I have.
Sorry, the house phone was ringing. As long as we have the chief here, could we jump to item? Number nine. All right. So, I know that at the November 29th meeting, we had a discussion with the chief about potential, potentially hiring Zachary Mosher. So, do you want to take it away, Chief?
Sure. We have one vacant position right now for the position of full-time police officer. It's left vacant for an officer who went to the state police earlier this year. We posted the position internally, we posted the position externally for a full-time academy-trained police officer. We got several applications. We conducted in-depth background checks. Then we did interviews. And our pick for the next position, the one who came out on top was Zachary Mosher. He's a Rainham resident. He's a police officer in the town of Berkeley for six years. Three years before that, he was a part-time police officer, so he has nine years of police experience. He's got extensive training, including advanced roadside impairment training. He's a member of the SEMLEC Regional Search and Rescue Team. If he gets appointed tonight, he will continue with that position on the team representing the town of Lakeville, and looking to bring him and his experience to the Lakeville Police Department, and I respectfully request his appointment tonight to be effective January 30th.
Okay. So, I will, let's see. I will entertain a motion to appoint Zachary Mosher as police officer at Step 3, effective January 31st. Effective January 30th or 31st?
30th.
30th, January 30th, 2022, for a one-year probationary period to expire January 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, it should be Police Officer Constable.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to amend that, Police Officer Constable.
Second.
Second motion, I mean amendment.
Yeah, any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment?
Carbone, aye.
Camera, aye.
Fabian, aye. Okay, any other? I think we got everything else, right? Okay, all those in favor?
Carbone, aye.
The camera, aye.
Fabian, aye. Welcome, Zachary.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's nice to have you. It'll be nice to have you with us.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Chief, for all your work on this. I know you always put a lot of work into all the backgrounds and everything else, so, great. Good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Zachary.
All right. Let's see. So, let's discuss the annual town meeting. Okay, so, we have a draft schedule, drafted schedule for the annual town meeting. Ari, do you want to give us a little information here?
So, we worked back from May 16th, which I believe is the date that the board had started to move with. The, if the board approves the schedule, we would open warrants tonight, closing warrants in March. Articles will go to Town Council mid-March. The vote would take place in April 11th, and legal in the paper soon thereafter. We'd have warrant review on April 25th. The reason for that, it's a little bit awkward schedule-wise, is that the regularly scheduled board meeting would be on May 9th, which is very close to the town meeting date. So, we thought it'd be better to go with the April 25th meeting, which is the next previous one. But of course, that can be adjusted if the board so chooses. I just want to give enough time to be able to put together the packets and all that stuff. So, that's what we're looking at right now.
All right, so, the town meeting is going to be May 16th.
Yes, I believe, I believe that's the date that all of you can be there.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to call the annual town meeting on May 16th, 2022, and open the warrant for the town meeting from January 10th, 2022, to May 14th, 2022, at 4:00 p.m.
Second. All right, any other discussion on that? All those in favor? Carbone, aye.
The camera, aye.
Fabian, aye. And I'm sure that'll get posted on the website.
Yep.
As soon as possible. All right. Let's see. Next, we have Agenda Item Number 5, which is about the Community Preservation Act ballot question. So, at the last meeting, well, at the meeting when we discussed this ballot question, we wanted clarification on the section right before "matching funds." So, it looks to me like the change that we're looking to make is putting the word "any" before the word "matching funds." So, I believe we need to read this in its entirety, correct?
I believe that's correct. If the board is comfortable with any matching funds, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, does anyone want to talk about this before we make the motion and the reading? Does anyone want to, does everyone remember that we just were questioning the way that it was written?
Okay, I think the word "any" covers, covers quite a few bases.
Yep, me, too. All right.
And that was recommended by Town Council, too, for the record.
Yeah, correct. Thank you.
Yeah. So, do we need to vote, I guess, to change it? We just need to vote to change it to this, correct, from what we had? Well, no, because we didn't even approve the last one, right?
No, you didn't. I think you tabled it, so.
So, we just.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think if you read the amended text, get motion, you know, approval through there, then we'll be fine.
Okay. Any volunteers? Right, I was trying to get Maureen to do it. Okay. All right, so, I make a motion, I step down as chair, make a motion that we approve the following ballot question. Shall the town of Lakeville accept Sections 3 to 7, inclusive of Chapter 44B of the General Laws, as approved by its legislative body, a summary of which appears below? Sections 3 to 7 of Chapter 44B of the General Laws of Massachusetts, also known as the Community Preservation Act, establishes a dedicated funding source to enable the town to: One, acquire, create, and preserve open space; Two, acquire, preserve, rehabilitate, and restore historic resources; Three, acquire, create, preserve, rehabilitate, and restore land for recreational use; Four, acquire, create, preserve, and support community housing; and Five, rehabilitate or restore open space and community housing that is acquired or created with community preservation funds. In Lakeville, the funding source for these community preservation purposes will be a surcharge of 1% on the annual property tax assessed on real property and any matching funds provided by the state from a trust fund created by the act. If approved, the act will take effect on July 1st, 2022, and the following will be exempt from the surcharge. One, property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or lower moderate-income senior housing; Two, $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property; and Three, $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of Class 3 commercial property and Class 4 industrial property as defined in Section 2A of said Chapter 59. Taxpayer receiving a regular property tax abatement or exemption will also receive a prorata reduction in surcharge. Unity Preservation Committee will be established by Town of Lakeville General Bylaws to study community preservation resources, possibilities, and needs, and to make annual recommendations to Town Meeting on spending the funds. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carbone, aye.
The camera, aye.
And Fabian, aye. Okay. Let's see. Next up, we have to discuss the letter that we received from Senator Michael Roderick's regarding $250,000 in funding for the Assawampset Pond Complex Management Plan. So, we are very happy to receive this in the office. I knew, I know Ari knew about it right away when all the information had come out. So, this is a letter from Senator Michael Roderick's, who's our local senator and who has committed to helping us with the Assawampset Pond Complex. So, most recently, last summer, we had some folks who wanted to put together a lake district to try to raise money in a different way to help with weeds in Long Pond, and that lake district didn't pass, but now there is folks trying to put together their 501(c). See, is that what it is? Yeah. But in the background, too, we've all been working with everyone we know at SERPED, Representative Oral, Senator Mike Roderick's. I know we gave an update that our federal representative, Representative Aken Kloss, had come here, too. So, we really are working in the background. This has sort of become, you know, one of my favorite things to work on. So, it was, you know, very, very exciting when we received this letter. So, it's dated December 29th, and it says, "Dear Lakeville Select Board, as many of you know, Governor Baker recently signed House Bill 4269 and Act Relative to Immediate COVID-19 Recovery Needs. Following weeks of bicameral negotiations, I secured $250,000 for the Assawampset Pond Complex Management Plan. These funds, which will be awarded to Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, which we all call SERPED, will be used to support the Pond Complex through means that include, but are not limited to, the management and eradication of invasive weeds in Long Pond and other flood management efforts. SERPED, along with their colleagues on the APC management team, are proven stewards of our region, and these once-in-a-lifetime dollars will aid in their enduring efforts to maintain this critical watershed that serves so many of our surrounding communities. I look forward to continuing our work together as we tackle the issues associated with water quality and management within the South Coast. As always, please feel free to contact my office, Senator Michael J. Roderick." So, this is, this is actually, we've already received one $250,000 grant, which was going to a lot of studying, but this actually is going to be used to literally help get rid of some of the weeds. So, it's going to be administered through SERPED. Usually, the town of Lakeville is responsible for keeping some tabs on the money, but this one here is going to SERPED, but we couldn't be happier to see some of our efforts coming to, coming to reality here. So, I'm very excited about that, and I'll open it up, let the other two selectmen and Ari comment.
Certainly progress for us, you know, to address the issues. And I know that our legislatures are definitely keeping this, you know, at the forefront. So, I'm pleased to see this, and thank you, Senator Roderick's.
Yep.
Madam Chair, you're certainly pleased to see, you know, some funding initially. But as you know, Madam Chair, you know, through the APC that you serve on, that there's some other pieces that, you know, need to be addressed. And I know a lot of that's been discussed, but a couple of things right now is that the, the Opera money, that is a $4 billion Opera money that's been released by the state, there's a significant amount of funding, you know, in there to do some of the additional projects that need to be addressed, which includes looking at the boat ramp over in Free Town on Long Pond, looking at the COVID on Route 18, where the flooding occurred in 2010. The dam, looking at the dam itself. But if you look at the bills that have been passed and you look at the guidelines that Ari just sent us about some of the uses of the funding, they've provided additional avenues to address some of these issues. So, I know we don't have control over that, okay? Because we don't own Long Pond and Assawampset, the state does. But I think that what needs to be impressed upon SERPED, and I know you've been working on this, that, you know, to get some of these things moving. Because what's going to happen is that with all this money that's available throughout the state, engineering services are going to be very difficult to get. Construction projects are going to be very difficult to get. So, we really should try to get a handle on this in the next month so to figure out, you know, what we can do next. But we're certainly pleased with the $250,000 that we've received.
Yeah, I agree. Ari can probably speak to the meeting that he and I had with Nancy Yates, who's the APC, our APC representative. And we had with SERPED, and we were, we were saying just that. You know, I know the folks in Lakeville would actually like to see, you know, to start to see some work get done. I don't know, Ari, if you want to comment at all?
Both Select Board Member Carbone, as well as, and Select Board Member Camera, as well as yourself, Madam Chair, there's a, this is certainly a welcome down payment, I suppose. There's a significant need for hard improvements, not just, you know, not just, just, just studies and adjustments, but significant infrastructure, both the drainage for Assawampset Pond, the issue over Long Pond with the invasive weeds. There's some culvert issues that we have all on the pond as well. You know, really large amounts of work that needs to happen that has not happened over time. So, you know, I think we're grateful for this money. I've certainly conveyed to myself, and I know you all have, to Senator Roderick, as well as to Representative Oral, that, you know, we appreciate this, but also that there's a need for significant improvement. And, you know, my understanding is it's going to be grant rounds opening up soon, and they're, you know, they're involved and engaged on that. Hopefully, SERPED will be able to step up and come forward with the, with the applications we need to get this stuff moving forward. I've also talked to some of my counterparts in other neighboring jurisdictions as well. They're anxious to get going on this as well.
Yeah, I'd also like to take this opportunity to introduce Mark Gresnik. I know he was with us when he was appointed, but it's convenient that we have the town planner. He's our new town planner, who I expect to also be able to help us out in this whole, you know, lot of, you know, I'll be coming to you with a lot of questions. So, it's nice to have a town planner on this, too. When I talked to SERPED folks at SERPED last week, I told them that you had started, and they were so excited. So, I'm sure you'll be, I have a feeling you probably know some of the folks there anyways, but, you know, they were very excited to hear that on all ends for the town of Lakeville. So, again, welcome. Welcome to Mark, your first official working meeting here, so, perfect timing there. All right, so, for everyone at home, I know there's that other organization. I believe they're meeting tonight, so Nancy Yates was going to take this news to them. Also, I know that they're working as well, so it's kind of nice that we're all sort of working together, because that's basically, that's pretty much the point that Representative Aken Kloss made, was there's a lot of money right now at the federal level, but you have to come to us with one plan, not like competing plans. So, you know, it's important for us to keep, to continue working together with everyone involved on this. So, it's my hope that we can continue to do that and continue to see, you know, grant money like this come in. All right, is it, I still don't have 7 o'clock yet, so. I don't really want to jump into anything too significant when we only have a couple minutes. Why don't we go to item number 10, if everyone can do that for us? That is to reappoint Kenneth Upham Sr. as Constable. So, I will entertain a motion that we reappoint Kenneth W. Upham Sr. as Constable for the town of Lakeville from January 17th, 2020, to expire January 16th, 2023.
So moved.
22.
Yeah, it's 22, Madam Chair.
Yep. But to expire 2023, right?
So, 2020, by mistake.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so January 16th, 2022, to expire January 16th, 2023. Sorry. All right. So, you seconded, right, Rich?
Yes.
All right, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Carbone, aye.
Camera, aye.
Fabian, aye. All right. My laptop says 7 o'clock, so I do know that we have, at least, there he is. Jose is with us. Happy New Year, Jose.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Who else do we, do you have with you?
Jonathan Watkins is on here and will be joining us also. He is the president of LakeCam, and he's going to lead with the intro, once you're ready for him.
Okay. So, this is something that we do that's required every year. So this is, um, something that we do that's required every year. We go over, um, the financials. There's no real vote to be taken by the Board of Selectmen. It's just something that we, we review. So if you guys want to take it away.
Certainly. And good evening, Board of Selectmen. And for those of, are joining, um, my name is Jonathan Watkins. I'm the President of the Board for the Lake Cam, um, nonprofit, and we are presenting our 2020 financials to you for your review. The, um, 2020 year was one where we did incur some capital expenditures due to some aging equipment, which Jose can talk about. Obviously, there's, there's a more interesting development coming up in next year's financials as we talk about, uh, having established more permanent location. So I will let Jose take over discussing 2020 and anything that is important to highlight in our financials. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you for, for taking us. We are required to present annually per, uh, the contract or the, um, the agreement we have with the town. 2020 certainly was a very challenging year. And the reason why we're presenting 2020 now is that, uh, we have, did not get our financials until November, mid-November of, of 2020 due to delays due to COVID. We hope that we'll have the 2021 financials done, um, sooner, sooner than next time. So we apologize for the tardiness of this presentation. Thank you for indulging us on, on this, um, on this delay. And, um, I don't know how much you want me to go into this, um, in terms of, because I think we've had this discussion, um, in, earlier in 2021 about what happened in 2020 with Lake Cam and us hosting and scheduling your meetings. Um, we, we think we've done a, a pretty good job of that, including training, um, the late, the volunteers who are on the boards and also offering, um, as a, a number of them, webcams to get them to be able to participate, um, virtually. So, um, if you'd like to jump right into the financials, I can share the, the key page, which is page three, and go through the, um, the lines that were, um, signif- significantly, um, different year over year. I'm going to share the screen, share my screen. Can everybody see that? Okay, first, uh, first and foremost, uh, the, the salaries and wages line, went up because we had a fluctuation in our staffing levels from 2019 to 2020. We were fortunate to have a full crew for most of 2020. And, um, part of that increase was not just having an additional person, but when we started the pandemic, um, meeting coverages, we were having, uh, uh, three people on individual meeting. I'm sorry, let me start that again. We were having three people on individual meetings in order to, uh, set it up, um, set up individual connections, help people with their connections and also get it on live on TV. So there is an increase, a $29,000 increase there year over year. In 2020, we also, um, bought a, a service contract for our most expensive equipment, which is now five years old. So that's the biggest difference there, that consultants line. We also brought in a networking and streaming expert to help us. The law, the donations line was significantly up due to Lake Cam contributing $10,000 for the Old Town Hall, excuse me, Historic Town Hall, um, renovation project to put heating in there. So that's why there's a big jump there. And finally, um, there is a depreciation expense increase, also due to the COA equipment that was installed. So we have a, a, um, decrease in net assets, but those are the majority of the reasons why, year over year. Does anyone have any specific questions about those or any, any other, um, financial information?
I'm good.
I'm all set. Thank you.
I'm all set. I'm all set too, Jose.
Okay. And Jonathan, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that's well covered.
Hey. That's what we're required to talk about. And if anyone else has any other questions, I have a few other, a few numbers, other numbers to share with you, uh, just in general. And that is, um, one of the, one of the questions I get frequently is, well, isn't Lake Cam in, in jeopardy due to cord cutting? And we did see a 16% reduction as of the end of 2020. A lot, a lot of people were cord cutting. We had subscribers go down by 16% in Lakeville. Curiously, we did not see a, a, a reduction in our revenues, which, um, tells me there's some timing issue there with the monies. We get monies quarterly, so we should have seen a drop off towards the end, or of when we receive our monies from the end of, of 2020. We did not, which is really curious. I think what's happening is we have new customers coming on, new subscribers coming on, um, in Lakeville, from the people who are moving in, in, in apartments in Lakeville, because we've had a, quite a few built. We did have, and I, I don't want to neglect this, we did have a decrease in the number of programs we had on that we produced by, by Lake Cam. We went from 565 in 2019 to 423 in 2020, a reduction of 25%. Most of that was due to canceled or, um, high school sports that didn't happen. That was the biggest hit we took. So I wanted to put that on the record that, um, the pandemic did affect us in 2020 and even, even more so in '21. We had 376 programs produced. So, um, we, we, my goal is always to get as much local programming on as possible, but in, in this situation, it's, it's not, it's not possible. So, any, any general questions anyone has? Let me take that off. I'm sorry.
I have a general question. Um, I just wanted to reiterate that when COVID, um, started, Lake Cam was there for the town. And I know you had, you know, it was a bit to, it, it took a bit to get everybody up and going. But I, I think we, I think with your help, we all got, we got pretty much all our boards up and running in a virtual format. And, um, you know, I, I know we did it faster than a whole lot of other towns. And I know that, um, you know, individually, you each helped, you know, some folks get there who, you know, like you said, either didn't have a webcam or on their own or they, you know, didn't have the best service or they just didn't really understand. And you, you really help folks individually. So, um, can never thank you enough for that kind of extra effort, Jose, honestly.
And I'd like to thank, um, Eric Anderson, Kevin Rutledge, Craig Salvador and, and Sean Rutledge. That, our team has been spectacular, I think. I think, um, uh, Lake Cam has produced television quality meetings from Zoom, which, um, if you ever watch in other towns, it doesn't always happen. So we're very proud of that. We're proud that, um, we've been able to host all the meetings that have been requested. So, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to do that.
Lorraine, anything else?
No, I just, it's always been a pleasure to work with Jose and his team, always.
Okay, Rich? Any questions?
Just to reiterate what you said, Leah, you know, it was a tough time for the last, you know, two years now. But, um, I think we're in a lot better position town-wise, by, um, believing to, um, broadcast our meetings. And that's because of Jose, Jose and his, uh, team, they've done a great job. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, and I, I would, uh, you know, Ari and I, Ari more than me during, now that I'm the chair, but when I wasn't the chair, I would keep an eye on, you know, the views, viewers. But we may not have all the viewers while the meeting's happening, but by the end of the week, I think hundreds of people have watched our selectmen's meeting. So, um, it's great to, to make it available. It's so easily accessible. You guys have put in so much work. You know, it's just great because I, I love that people know what's going on. So. All right. So have you moved your location now totally or?
We have not. We have not. We, um, I have had problems getting the, uh, the office and the studio space up and running. Um, and I don't want to get into the specifics of why.
It's fine. Yep.
But, um, like any other company, um, I've had, had problems sourcing materials and, and, and contractors and, and tradespeople in order to do the work. And, um, unfortunately, as a, a new buyer of these services, especially the, these, the tradespeople aren't taking on new, new clients. So it's, it's, that's a little difficult. So it's taking us longer than, than I expected and I apologize for that. But we're, we're working on it.
Okay. All right. Okay. So if there's nothing else, Ari, anything from you?
No, I just, just, I don't want to belabor the point, but, um, I will say that Lake Cam has been a pleasure to work with. We're some, a couple of ideas with them as well. Um, I am, um, I'm really impressed when I came into the town eight months ago with how, how well situated the town was when it comes, came to remote meetings. And we're not letting it sit at that. Jose's been working on, and, and some hybrid ideas, which we've been, which we've been putting together for hybrid meetings when that time comes, um, and, uh, other ways that we can outreach the community as well. So it's, it's, uh, the, Lake Cam is a really important asset to the town.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So thank you for the update. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you. All right. So, uh, let's see here. We are at number seven, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Number seven. I'm going to turn this one over to you, Ari.
Okay. Thank you. Back in June, uh, the Select Board, um, at the time, the Board of Selectmen voted to accept funding awarded to the town under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. To date, the town has received $605,037 from the US Treasury. That's the first of two tranches. And there'll be a second tranche next year around the same time. Um, and we've also been awarded another $554,555 in change to Plymouth County. That represents a quarter of the, of the per-population rate allocation that the town would receive strictly based on the, the numbers provided by Treasury. Plymouth County has been frankly, a little bit cagey in terms of how much of that's going to end up, um, going directly to localities. But anyway, at this point between the two, we have about 1.1 and a half million dollars in, in, in authority. Eligible uses for ARPA proceeds are defined broadly in the act. The, uh, US Treasury has finally come out with a, a final rule, which takes place in April, which takes effect in April, that clarify, further clarifies the uses. The rule lists the following eligible activities. Replacing lost public sector revenue, supporting the COVID-19 public health and economic response, providing premium pay for eligible workers performing essential work, basically mostly health and, um, and public safety, um, and investing in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. The biggest change in the final rule is the way it, um, it simplifies the replacement of lost revenue by allowing every locality, no matter how much money they get, to, um, to, uh, to, to, to assign up to $10 million to, as a standard allowance for, for revenue loss. So in theory, the town could just take $10 million and dump it into the general fund right now, in theory. Or not 10 million, I'm sorry, 605,000, the, the 1.15 million, what we, we have. The, uh, whether that's a good idea, I think is a matter for discussion. Um, yeah, this is money that's meant to last through 2024. And, um, I think our collective approach on all this has been be as conservative as possible. So to that end, um, the, the Select Board has authorized the use of ARPA proceeds to start the feasibility study on provision of water to the town facilities and parks. We had the kickoff meeting with the, uh, with the OPM on that, uh, last week. And that process is getting underway. I'll be able to report back to you on that when, probably in a month, few months, in terms of where, where that stands. And, um, and as that project takes shape, we'll, Bill, talk about that a little more. Um, in addition, there's currently a very significant need to provide testing and vaccination. And we talked a little bit earlier about the, about the testing clinics and vaccination clinics that we're standing up. We kind of jumped the gun because we know there's a crisis going on right now to get those going. I think that's what the board would want us to do. We have to pay for them somehow. That's why I have Chief O'Brien on. The estimate just for staffing for the, um, vaccination clinic, I believe, chief is, uh, $2,400 a week, right? Is that we, chief? Yeah. And $1,200 a week for the, uh, for the testing clinic. So we have to find a way to pay for those. But then there's also the cost of taking supplies, um, you know, the, um, uh, testing kits. We know we're not getting free testing kits here in Lakeville. It's not yet. And, um, we have to find ways to handle all those things. Um, I thought it'd be useful to have the chief talk a little bit about what he's been doing so far. But, um, the, the bottom line to, to what I'm looking for today is a carve-out to, for, that we can use, um, as, as pre-assigned for, um, vaccination and testing activities, um, and mitigation strategies. Maximum of a hundred, of $100,000 to start. Think that'll be enough for a while. It may not be enough to last us through '24. It'll be enough for a little while anyway. And, um, we, um, thought that'd be a good place to start. I don't know, chief, if you want to chime in a little bit about what your, um, about, but your, your overall plan?
So my plan is to, um, set these vaccination, uh, testing stations in, in, uh, excuse me, the, uh, the COVID-19 PCR testing in the vaccination clinics up as a, as a detail. And, uh, when you set up as a detail, then it encourages more participation from our qualified fighters, which, uh, the more our qualified fighters have to do with this, um, provision of, of services, uh, the less of a burden on our, our full-time staff, which, which, um, who are already burdened. We've entered into a partnership with the, with the local doctor. As the demand for, for testing has risen, the, uh, the responsiveness of the labs have been, uh, has been decreasing, uh, as they're, they're becoming overwhelmed as well. So it's not, um, it's not a, it's not the, the service that we, we would ideally provide, but it's, it's certainly the best we can do under these circumstances. I'm not sure if, uh, the, is the, uh, Select Board interested in, um, in, in the, in the current COVID situation? Or would you like just to know about, uh, the activities as they relate to vaccines and testing?
Um, I'd be interested in the COVID information right now.
So we've, we've, uh, in the month of December, we treated, uh, 18 patients with, um, with, uh, COVID or potential COVID-related symptoms. That's 18 transports, which is significantly higher than our previous December. I think it's 30% higher, actually. Our overall call volume is up 16%. And while that's not directly related to COVID or COVID patients, uh, it certainly has something to do with the crisis. We have a lot of people who've delayed treatment, elective surgeries, uh, people getting, uh, having problems, uh, getting the dialysis they need and treatments they need. And it all parlay's into, uh, into, um, poorer health for our residents. And so we're, we're seeing a, we're seeing a smack of these, uh, these, the spike of, of all of our calls. We, our, our chief complaint, our number one cause of, for ambulances to go out the door all year long has been psychological emergencies and behavioral emergencies. These are all indirect, uh, indirectly related to the COVID crisis. So how does that connect back to these, these testing stations, um, uh, in these, uh, in the, in the vaccine clinic? I'm just incredibly proud that, that our firefighters keep on answering the call. Uh, we put the, we put the initial, uh, vaccine clinic out, which is occurring on Wednesday, and it was filled in five minutes. And we put the initial testing, um, clinic, uh, out, um, later on the afternoon. And that was filled within five minutes. They just keep on stepping up and we will continue to provide these services as long as, uh, there's a demand for them, as long as they're sustainable for our staff.
Yeah, I'd like to add, the, the, um, the, the, the firefighters are a really terrific group. They really, they really do step forward for this community. You know, our positivity rate in Lakeville is elevated. As you know, I've kept you all up to date on that. It's below the state average, which was about 22%. But, um, as of last week, we were at 19.5%, which is elevated and indicates to me a need, you know, to kind of get people thinking about testing and getting out there and getting, and watching what they're watching, self-pricing, good hygiene. And, um, and also getting vaccinations as much as possible. Lakeville's in pretty good shape as far as vaccinations go. We're around, um, 70%. But, you know, there's, there's always that 30% more. Plus, uh, the, um, uh, the, the younger group, younger cohorts are not quite as far along. So that, that's really important as well.
We put out our, our appointment, um, link for our testing site a few hours ago. We already- a few hours ago, we already have twenty nine uh appointments booked, so I expect all hundred and twenty uh appointments on Wednesday to be booked within probably tonight or early tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm sure. Um I know that early on, a lot of folks before the CVSs and everything started testing around here went to Brockton and um to Massa Sawyer College for testing. And I don't think the lines at Massa Sawyer have been this bad since the beginning when no one else was really testing frequently, so um there's definitely a need in this community. Um I'm really glad to see, you know, that you're doing it, but again, you know, you have to uh always take into consideration the staff and everything else, like you said, we have to be able to get that ambulance out, so we're trying to do the best we can for everybody. I just appreciate everyone's efforts, it's kinda it's nice to know that people can stay local, I mean, you know, we, my husband and I had to go to wherever, found a CVS, you know, twenty miles away to get the booster, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
When it's um it's, you know, I kind of held out, it's a it's been on my mind to provide the service for a while. But I held out because I just didn't know how bad it was gonna get as far as our primary mission. Um and I'm I'm crediting a lot of the, I'm giving a lot of credit to our firefighters, but um you know, we have a COA staff supporting us, we have the Ed Collins um really stepping up, Ari is a is a phone call away at and at any time of day and and after hours when I have questions and and he's been very supportive of my efforts, so um you know, this is uh this is a community uh service that we're providing and and everybody's contributing outside of the fire department as well.
Okay, all right, so.
Ask the chief something, please.
Yep.
Uh just a little clarification, uh you saw over there, yeah, there you are. Um the testing that's going to be done is for Lakeville residents only, right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure so people understand that. The vaccination is not, because the vaccination has to be done through the state, you know, system, so want to make sure people, you know, understand that the testing, you have to make an appointment, Lakeville residents only, but the vaccinations is controlled by the state, so whatever people put in for an appointment, then we have to abide by that.
That's accurate, everything you just said is accurate.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, so um so the intent is to um use some of these ARPA funds to help cover the costs of the vaccination clinics and the testing. Um and the amount is a hundred thousand dollars, correct?
Yeah, my main purpose there is to make sure that we have the carve out, I don't want to spending anything we don't want to spend. Um and you know, and but take a conservative approach, not over budgeting it, just being being sure that we have a some enough low cares for a little while.
Yeah, okay, um does anyone want to make that motion?
Uh make a motion that we authorize um the town administrator the designation of up to one hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funding for COVID vaccination, testing and mitigation activities.
Yeah, that's good.
Um second.
All right, any discussion on that?
Yeah, I I have a question, Ari, and I know I've asked you this before, and I know it's very difficult to answer. Um but I understand the federal side of the monies, okay? That comes directly to the town, and this guidelines say what we have to do about that. Then there's the Plymouth County piece, okay? And I read the guidelines that you sent me, the forty four pages um that you sent me. Um and the question that I have is that according to those guidelines, the um the federal government is saying that it does not have to be approved. Uh it can just be used, now does Plymouth County understand that?
I think they do.
Okay.
In the in the in i- it's not a question of whether they're approving the money, it's a question of how much, because the the money that they've received is, as far as the federal government's concerned, the county's money. And um so i- it's it's a question from the uh the question is how much of that money are they gonna direct allocate to to look to the localities of the towns and cities, towns? And uh or and how much are they going to keep it a pool for other purposes, whatever that might be? And that's really, that's really the county's prerogative. Um so right now, what they've done, they started with tw- with a twenty five percent carve out. Um you know, uh when I've heard, I'll I'll be honest with you, I've had very inconsistent guidance from the county regarding whether twenty five percent means, and they says twenty five percent, it means that we're gonna get a hundred percent, whether it means we're gonna get something else. Um I've had three different conversations with the county. One where they said, that means you're gonna get, you know, four tranches of this amount, great. Then I had another conversation where it was, no, wait a minute, we we don't know what you're gonna get beyond the one, beyond this twenty five percent. And then another one where they said, we're gonna get at least two, so and I haven't I haven't got any firm guidance either way.
No, I just don't want to see us, you know, you mentioned, you know, this here, and you also mentioned, you know, doing those proposed water projects, maybe, depending upon what it is. Um I just don't want to see them like they did in the COVID nineteen, which is a whole different part of money. That they say, oh, no, you can't do that, if it falls within the federal guidelines, then I assume we can do it.
Yeah, and the federal guidelines are pretty, th- they they basically say they're not gonna audit you. They they they're essentially trusting us to 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 do the right thing, but the truth is, the truth is, they don't even have to, with that standard allocation, they could just send a lot of money to us, and they wouldn't have to worry about it ever again. Because the standard allocation, we just can claim is claim the revenue loss in allocation, and then we can do what we want with it, we could use it to, you know, you use for for anything you wanted to from a policy standpoint, um so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other um any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Uh, the camera, I.
Baby and I. All right, uh thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, I appreciate the help, certainly do.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, okay, so next we have um so I've I last minute, I put this on the agenda. I know it was last minute and we didn't have a ton of information on it, but um I'll I'll break it down. I was on Facebook last Wednesday, and I saw that Middleborough helping Middleborough was having a lot of commenting on a proposed development. So I became interested because I hadn't heard anything about this proposed development. And once I realized that the proposed development was about a half a mile from um the Assawampset Pond, uh knowing everything I know about the APC, the Assawampset Pond Complex, the uh and it's the water source. I started making a few phone calls, um I called, you know, some folks at Serped. Um and no one sort of knew anything that was going on, so at that point, I asked um Ari and Mark um if they could, you know, do some investigating. Um just because I was just concerned, because like I said, you know, Representative Akinclaw said to us, you know, you have to come to to us if you're looking for more grant money with like one mission in mind, so I'm always, you know, trying to keep it all together when it comes to the APC and doing all this work um for the APC, trying to preserve water quality and everything else, I was like, wow, you know, we don't even know what kind of um like sewage or septic or whatever, so um Mark was able to make a call to the planning office in Middleborough, and to be perfectly honest with you, we didn't even get some of this information until four o'clock on Thursday afternoon, if everyone recalls. Uh four o'clock, five o'clock in the afternoon on Thursday, Ari and I were talking about closing or not closing Town Hall and making plans to regroup at four AM, so um you know, kind of got a little lost in the shuffle, but anyways, so the reason this is on here isn't because they asked us to make a comment or not, the reason this I put it on the agenda is so we could have a conversation. Um and I just wanted to be sure the other two selectmen know what's up with this. Ask you both if you know any more than we do. Um let you know that we were not formally asked to make a comment. Um but if we want to make um a letter, Mark drafted a letter, again, it's just a draft, we don't have to send anything at all, so um it's important enough for me that I put it on here, but if it's, you know, not the board's wish to um to, we can do nothing, so um I'll let Mark give us a little update on his conversation with the planning office in Middleborough.
Um well, after um getting the assignment, I talked to the staff at the planning office about the history of the property and that it had been proposed originally for um I believe thirty seven house lots, and then it was finally approved for approximately twenty eight. Now, the big reason why it was such a large parcel approved for such a small number is because the soils in that area really can't sus- sustain that much uh development. Um as well as uh issues related to setting drainage basement basins as well. Uh they encouraged us to submit a letter. Um I researched a little bit about the uh Assawampset Pond Complex, which I did not know anything about, and found some additional information on the uh Mass Audubon website. Um which is some of the the information that's in the letter, so I included that. Um and I then as well followed up with the another conversation with the director in uh planning director in um in Middleborough as well. Um I received um some more information, and she did encourage the selectmen to um uh the select board, excuse me, uh to to uh send a comment letter to uh their selectmen, um because they felt uh it was uh an inappropriate location for high-density development, given the um the issues with the site as well as its uh proximity to the ponds, and that they felt that uh commenting at this early stage would be quite helpful in trying to um uh either scale back or stop the project.
Okay, um so I know that um we were able to uh get a copy of a letter that um New Bedford um sent, I don't have it in front of me, but you know, um I my understanding too is that um there wasn't a whole lot of notifications that went out, so again, I hadn't seen this on Facebook. You know, I'm not so sure we would have known a whole lot about it. Um and that is one reason why I, you know, follow the Middleborough pages, the Lakeville pages, you know, we need to know um what's going on, um but like I said, I reached out to Serped too, and they didn't know anything either, so um so I guess we're at the point where, you know, number one, do we want to send a letter? In any way to the town of Middleborough, I mean, if I'm sending a letter, I'm going to oppose it for all the reasons stated, and I could go on and on and on for reasons, I mean, the Rangers are typically the ones that uh monitor that closest part, which is all no trespassing. Um you know, half a mile's a half mile, a lot of folks don't know that parts of the you know, around the Assawampset are no trespassing, so just foot traffic, extra foot traffic alone might not be a good thing there. Plus, it is a water source, so we do have to be really careful, so I'm going to open the floor up to um the other two selectmen and let me know how you feel about it.
Well, Madam Chair, I, you know, I did take a a moment to um you know, look into this, and uh there's always, you know, gonna be developments, you know, being presented in front of um you know, the planning boards and and the towns and sister towns. Uh so I, you know, as a select board member, you know, do have concerns with development around our our, you know, water source, our Assawampset and and Long Pond as well. Um but I also, you know, recall that when we were going through the development with the um Island Terrace um project, that there were some interventions with um, you know, the DEP. Um you know, Bedford, Taunton, you know, they all weighed in and made sure that anything that went there, you know, certainly met any requirements to protect that water source, so I would I would hope that that would be the same approach taken for this development, it is a large development. Um I mean, the numbers are, what, thirty three, and then it went up to a hundred and something, I guess, um a hundred and twenty three units? So that's, you know, that's a big jump, um but I would think that we would have regulations and processes in place to help protect that, so I wouldn't necessarily say that I'm opposed to it, but I certainly have serious concerns.
Okay. Rich?
Um I I can't, you know, say I'm opposed to it or not, I am very concerned that it's so close to the Assawampset, absolutely. But without getting, we don't have any plans or anything about this project, you know, at all, I know that Mark did his best to try to, you know, attach a couple of things. Um I think that, you know, what we should, what we should do is that um since we are not familiar with what he what's even being proposed, I know they're saying here large septic systems on small lots, but I'm not sure if that's um uh the individual houses, is that a, you know, wastewater treatment plan or whatever? And then there's the mention here of the two basins directly adjacent to the city of the Bedford, which was included in the city of Bedford's letter. Um I'm definitely concerned about it, but I I don't think we should take a position because we don't have the facts, you know, about the septic system, I think that's up to the DEP to decide whether the septic systems conform to not, just as they did with uh the um uh the the project down on um um our project down the old, um what's it called now, Long Point Village or whatever it is, something. Um so that would concern me that we're saying something that we really don't have any facts on, that's that's all I'm saying. Maybe New Bedford does, I don't know, but that would be my only concern, I have no problem of um you know, that sending a letter, you know, the way it is, except, you know, getting out some of the information about the septic systems and because we don't know what that is.
Um so would you both be more comfortable with a letter that doesn't exactly say we oppose it, but um that what these are our concerns, go ahead, Ari.
I have a suggestion. Um if you revise the second top of the second paragraph from opposed to concerned to concerned about, so it's concerned about this development several reasons, and then strike the third and fourth paragraphs. Then the last paragraph says, while the town of Lakeville was not notified of this proposal by the applicant, we believe it is critically important that all the communities whose drinking water is supplied from the Assawampset Pond Complex be considered a butters, uh and be notified and be allowed to comment.
I would be comfortable with that.
I'm fine with that, too.
Yeah, I am too.
We can revise that and set up for you guys to sign.
Okay, yeah, um I I just feel like we do need to send, you know, um something. Uh but you're right, and I, you know, Mark, again, I know you've gotten as much information, but I can't remember, I don't think DEPs, it's even gotten that far, correct?
Yeah, uh uh my information is that this would be individual septic systems on each of the lots, so therefore DEP would probably not get be involved, it would be just approved by the local Board of Health. Um you know, under Title V rules, so.
Okay. Um, okay, so could I get a motion to approve the letter um that was presented to us with the corrections that Ari suggested?
I moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? And um this has to sort of go tomorrow, right, so we would need to come in and sign it right away.
Right.
Okay. All right.
We'll we'll get ready in the morning for you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Uh, the camera, I.
And I, all right, thank you, Mark, I know uh you weren't even on the job two days or two or three days before we dropped this on you. And I, all right. Thank you, Mark. I know you weren't even on the job two days or two or three days before we dropped this on you. So I appreciate that. So you're, you're, you're with us here for agenda item number eleven also, correct?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. All right. Let's say eleven. So, uh, request from Mass Housing for comments in regards to the proposed development known as North Bedford Crossing at one oh nine Bedford Street. So I will let there Ari or Mark, Ari maybe, because you've been doing it but with this a little longer, if you want to give us a breakdown.
I'll kick it off and then I'll go over, I'll send it over to Mark.
Okay.
So this property, as you know, has been discussed for a little bit of time. We received a letter from Mass Housing at the beginning of last month regarding the proposed forty B at one oh nine Bedford Street. This is a residential development, um, though consists of twenty units, I believe, you're twenty units on about five acres of very narrow, actually a pretty narrow strip of land, the widest frontage on Bedford Street is about two hundred feet. But the, uh, there was a site visit on December twenty-first that several of us went through, and I believe Mark has looked at the property since then. And, um, you know, the, we don't have a full site plan at this point. This is more of a, at this point, mass housing is just looking for, you know, initial statements of, of interest or non-opposition. So, Mark, do you want to take away a little bit?
Yeah, I walked the site last week and it's a pretty unremarkable site. It's quite level, appears to have reasonable soils from what I can see was dug up. It is long and narrow, as you can see from the sketch plan that they submitted. So it, my biggest concern would be obviously roadway design and drainage. It would be, but that would be something that would be reviewed by the zoning board at the time and and hopefully, and as well as peer reviewed by a consulting engineer. I'd also be concerned about with this developer seeing other, another one of his projects to ensure that there's screening and buffering and there's landscaping plans and some street lighting and street trees as well. The, the other project I saw is pretty much cleared. And no landscaping was installed. And the other, only other comment would be is if there's ever going to be a future sidewalk out on the main road that they install a sidewalk along one side of that street, along the, where the hot homes are. And otherwise, it's a, you know, for, for what we're looking at, at this level, that's fine.
So, Lorraine, do you, I think you went on the site visit, right? Do you have any, any comments?
I just, I have two. My, my biggest concern was line of sight coming out onto Route eighteen. The speed limit, I believe, is fifty miles an hour coming out of there. We have some subdivisions across the street, so they seem to have very clear line of sight. But when coming out of this particular development, you, you can see to the right very well, but on the left, it's a little I guess there's some, you know, trees and stuff there. So I just have concern about the line of sight, you know, pulling out of that development. The other thing I did notice here that there is a plan, which I found to be very commendable regarding having a unit here for a veteran. So I wanted to just note, make note of that. I thought that that was, you know, something that was nice to see there. And it looks like they're trying to establish funding for that, that particular unit, so that it's you know, lower, lower cost. So other than that, those are the only couple of things I wanted to make note of.
Okay. Rich?
Yeah, Madam Chair, a couple of things. First of all, the the other projects that this developer has, has done over the years. One of the things that needs to be addressed is that we need to have these affordable units be perpetual, which means they always need to be sold as affordable units. And what's happening with one of his developments is that, you know, when, of course, especially with fifty-five and older people, they, they pass away and they sell their property. And they're, they're affordable units in this, trying to sell them as marketable units. Now, that needs to be looked at, Mark, because anything that's sold affordable for a higher price than it was sold for, the town is supposed to get the difference in that price to put towards a housing trust fund. So that's a different issue. But, you know, so that would be my concern. Number one is that these units are perpetual, so they can't be sold as marketed units in the future. So that, that I think is, should be pretty standard on any forty B project that we do. The second thing is that interesting statistics that in two thousand and twenty-one, we had a hundred and five new housing units in town that have been occupied, that are finished, hundred and five. That's unheard of in a town of Lakeville. But the situation is that eighty-five, eighty-three of that hundred and five forty B projects and forty R projects. And the balance of that, whatever the difference is there, is regular, normal, single-family houses, okay? So we don't have a lot of single-family houses being built in town, but we have a number of forty B projects. And the year before that, two thousand and twenty, we had seventy-eight units built in town. So it's up significantly. And sixty-seven out of those seventy-eight were forty B projects. So that's a concern to me. I'm going to give you two thousand and nineteen, because two thousand and nineteen was just as bad. Fifty-three out of the sixty-seven units that were built in, in two thousand and nineteen were also forty B and forty R projects. So that, those numbers are a little concerning to me, you know, as far as the town is concerned. So from that perspective, we're never going to meet our ten percent goal, you know, affordable units. It's just not going to happen with these kind of numbers that are being added. So I would like to suggest that we ask them to provide thirty percent instead of twenty-five percent of affordable units, which is just one more unit. And the other thing that I would ask them to consider is, is that, you know, I looked at these units and I looked at the design of these units and the two-bedroom units would have the master bedroom on the first floor. So which means it would be a good, good thing for seniors, and I would like to see them designate a percentage of these units. They have to agree to this, of course, you know, for senior housing. So those are three of my, my proposals that I think ought to be considered.
Okay, so do we want to write these up? And make these recommendations to Mass Housing? Is that?
Sorry, I muted. We can prepare a letter and if, you know, I can either send it on behalf of the board, or if you'd like to have the board members all sign it, that's fine, too.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with Ari signing it on behalf of the board. Yeah, yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Mark, is there anything else? I know you said a lot about the actual, you know, visual part of the development.
Um, no, I really don't have anything else that's, yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, that will all come to. We don't have site plans, you know, we don't know. Before it goes to the Board of Appeals, that'll be a different situation.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so Ari and Mark can work on that. Ari can sign on our behalf.
Got it.
Okay. But just for clarification, if I can, so instead of for going up to a thirty percent housing, affordable housing, so it would be five for twenty-five percent, and then it would just go up to, it would be six, I believe, at thirty percent. Am I math correct?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Truly up to Mass Housing, whether they go along with that, but we could truly suggest.
Right. Yep. Okay. All right, I think we are.
Can we take a vote on those recommendations?
Oh, do you, if you want, I just thought we would.
I think we should.
Yeah, okay.
Let me read them out, so you make sure. I've got landscaping. One thing I was going to write also, Bob, because Mike O'Brien says, says there's something was about it, to make sure that the fire service provisions are appropriate with the road and turnarounds and things like that. Sidelines, some of the, Lorraine mentioned, the thirty percent affordable, affordable in perpetuity and provision for senior housing.
Okay.
Is that everything?
Yeah. All right, so I'll entertain a motion that we send a letter with the town administrator sign on our behalf stating those as our comments.
So moved.
Second.
Other discussion. All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
And Fabian, I. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I think I think Mark's done for the night. Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see everybody.
Very happy.
To see you too. All right, so next we have agenda item number twelve, which are minutes to be approved. So I do believe we were all here for all of these. So I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from December sixth, twenty twenty-one, December tenth, twenty twenty-one, December thirteen, twenty twenty-one, and December twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Um, I'm like, yes, I'll, I'll second that.
All right.
So moved.
Okay. All right. Second, one of us seconds. All right, any, any comments, changes?
I just, Ari, I'm just cosmetic on twelve, six, and twelve, ten, under any other business that may properly come before it. There was no other.
That, that's true.
Okay. And page three on December thirteenth, at the bottom, under site plan review, it's Rhode Island Road, not Rod. And on December twentieth, I was just looking at the motion for, for Mark. I know that I, that I was opposed. I don't know that I seconded that motion. I don't know if Leah stepped down to second that motion or not, and I didn't have an opportunity to do that.
Trac, we listen, Tracy, can you come on, Tracy? I think we both listened to that, right?
Yes, we did.
Okay. All right. No, that's fine. If, I think I just made my comments.
I think you did it for purposes of discussion, Lorraine.
Correct, okay. Then I'm good.
Okay. All right, so with those, can we approve with those corrections then? All those in favor with those corrections?
Carboni, I.
Look, I'm right.
Baby and I. All right, oh, hold on. Get rid of my whole pack. New business. Any new business? Only once, only twice, no new business. All right, old business. Any old business before I get into goals? Any other old business?
Not at this time.
All right. So back in August, I think it was August ninth, we had discussed some goals for the town administrator. So I know we tabled it because.
Started back in May.
Yeah, it did. But I know after the August ninth meeting, Ari did a summary of some of the things that we talked about that night. So the importance of getting these goals done is to have an objective measure by which to, you know, do part of the town administrator review on. So let me just start with how many goals does everyone think is appropriate? I think anywhere between five or six. Anyone want to weigh in?
Madam Chair, I agree.
Okay, Lorraine?
I'm good with six hard goals.
Okay, so let's, I will make, make, step down, make a motion that we make six goals. Anyone want a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on six? All those in favor of six?
Carboni, I.
Uh, look, I'm right.
Baby and I. All right, so last minute, I did send a couple of things, but I did forward, again, I told Tracy and Ari that I would sort of, you know, send out whatever we had, because this should pretty much be a review for most of us. So I know the, the update that Ari had done on August tenth has a few things on here. I will just state what my most important goals were going into this, and then I'll ask each of you to do the same. So when Ari first started, one of my most important goals was addressing the health insurance, which we know is is that is currently fifty-fifty for any new hires. So I'm going to, you know, suggest that that is one of the goals. My other goal that I originally had was to finally work on completing the voiceover I T project because that was around for quite a while. My third goal that I had was getting the building department and moved over to the historic library. And right now, I'm going to leave mine at that. Those were my three really important things, especially the fifty-fifty, looking, looking at the fifty-fifty, not necessarily changing the entire thing, but at least doing some research on the fifty-fifty. So does anyone else want to offer me their top three? And we'll see where we end up. No one?
No, I'm thinking.
Okay.
Rich, I know, I would like to see hiring practices, you know, updated and have the handbook reflect the practices of recent. Have that reviewed. I know that's going to, you know, take a little time because it's going to be approved by the unions too, but.
That is something you're going to see in, in my proposed budget, the beginning of that. We're going to have a class and comp study in there. So that's going to be part of, that's part of what, what's looking at.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, this is supposed to be goals that are supposed to be accomplished by May seventeenth.
Yeah.
That isn't going to happen.
Yeah, well, I know, let's, let's just get a list and then we'll figure out the list. You don't have anything, Rich? I thought there was a couple of things that you had originally said, too.
I still have one more.
Oh, okay.
I would like to see that the, you know, Ari reengaged the Economic Development Committee, review their charge, and then schedule, you know, regular meetings for that committee.
Okay. All right, Rich, I thought when we talked in August, you had I think it was some of the OPM stuff, but like the, the Peach Barn.
Well, I think there was a couple of things that were included in the original, original goals, number one. Is to recruit key senior personnel. Job descriptions and recruit identified core positions, and their priorities are the central office. Support, town planner, the IT director, and the treasurer and collector.
Okay.
That was included in the original one, I think that was important. All that's been, all that's been accomplished, so.
Yep, okay.
Fan is to him, that's what we said, we were gonna do. The other thing was to. Evaluate policies and procedures, identify areas requiring attention. Corporation, core operational procedures, financial policies, purchasing, funds management, you know, pre-cash stabilization. Core process for budget process, personnel administration. So a lot of that has already been addressed as well, so I mean, that should be, you know, one of the goals that was originally set back in last May.
Yeah.
The other thing was the. All the infrastructure projects, you know, that we had. That, there's at least a half a dozen of them, and some of them are done, a majority of them are in the process. So I mean, that, those should be included in the goals as well, because that's very important, because all those fundings have been processed, I mean, funded. And those things need to be addressed, so if you're asking for three, those are my three.
Okay. So where I overlap with Rich is like the historic library with the infrastructure projects. So I would think that we could make that one, the infrastructure projects, yeah.
Any suggestion?
Yeah.
You call, you could consider VoIP as part of the infrastructure projects.
Consider what?
VoIP as part of the infrastructure projects.
Okay.
Just a suggestion, you had, that is your number two.
Yep. So, well, let's just say.
Took him a while to straighten that out, so that was a big project, we had a lot of problems with that.
Yes, okay, so does everyone agree with number one, infrastructure projects? And under that will include, you know. Peach Barn, all those things, does everyone agree with that? Some of them are still going on. Okay.
Well, I mean, you got a couple of major ones there, the fire station and the town hall, that's an infrastructure project.
That won't be done, obviously.
No, no, but I, but I'm saying that that's a major goal.
Right.
The other thing was, you know, looking at the water, you know, situation, water projects, you know, that's undergoing. The highway barn, that, I mean, highway office, excuse me, that's a major project and that's being worked on, you know, too. So those, those three or four items alone, I mean, they're big, big projects.
Yep, okay. Some, some under that category have been done, and, you know, some won't be done because we can't possibly finish them. But at least there'll be, you know, progress, so it's not like we're asking Ari to build us a complete new building that. You know, no one's ever mentioned before, so, okay.
At this point, if I were to do that, I'd have to rebuild out of Legos, so.
Yeah, so I'm really going to push hard for the health insurance. Because I think it's important that we be more competitive, we know we've lost new hires because of the health insurance. I would still, you know, like to see that as something that we say we can, we've accomplished. So does anyone else agree with me on that?
I agree, I think that's an important element, you know, not only for hiring, but also reducing costs, you know, overall. So I know that he's, he already has that proposal in place, and I know that it's probably gonna be. Included in the budget, at the same time, he has to meet with all the unions to negotiate that piece. So I, I would say that's definitely a high priority.
Yeah, also because, you know, I did hear individually from, you know, the unions too, that. You know, they were just, forget being happy or unhappy, it's just hard, you know, for them to. You know, whatever, so I, I think that one's really important, so, well, that takes care of everything that was on my list. So the economic development committee is. I know we mentioned it, but like I said, for the most part, let's give Ari a chance to talk on that. Because it almost seems like it's new. How would you feel about that at this point, knowing there's what, four months before a review?
I think that's tight, I think that, to, to move forward on that, if, if that's the board's direction to do so, which I'm certainly willing to do. I requested the board give a little more concrete direction as to what it wants to see in terms of economic development priorities. If we're gonna resuscitate that committee, there, there's really not consensus that I've seen regarding what. You know, strategy and approach you wanna take going forward, you know, there, the, even the master plan itself is kind of, of two minds. On, on that, so I, I think it's a conversation that probably would have to take place, maybe we would make it an item later on, talk about it. At, at the board level before moving forward, because I, I, I don't wanna end up sort of stepping in the. I, I don't, I wouldn't wanna end up sitting in the wrong direction, I wouldn't want the committee to be led astray either, in terms of what, what the priorities or desire is.
Well, at least we can get the, you know, the process in motion, not that, you know, it would have to be complete by May, because there's quite a few.
Yeah, that won't be.
Right, so at least if the, the goal is to get it started, I mean.
I, I guess, guess what I would say about that, because I've, I've brought it up a number of times over the last couple of years. The committee hasn't met in three years, and you're our representative, Lorraine, on the economic development committee. I would suggest that you call a meeting and meet and say, what do you guys wanna do? Because Ari certainly doesn't know what needs to be done, and we already have an existing charge, which you can get from, you can get from Tracy. But, you know. Nothing's happening, so that's what I would suggest to do, I don't think you should dump it on Ari's lap right now, he's got his hands full. Dealing with the budget coming up in the next, you know, couple of months, so. With all the other stuff, you know, that's going on here, so I, I don't consider that a priority, I mean, you wanna do something. After May or June or something like that, I mean, that's fine, but I, I don't think it's his responsibility to do that at this time.
Well, I think that, you know, I would have to agree to disagree with you on that, we were waiting for a town planner, now that we have a town planner. You know, at least we can begin the discussion. About the direction of the committee.
Well, the town planner, the town planner has his hands full too, you know, with a number of things that he's working on, and he's not gonna have time. He's gotta, he's gotta deal with the rules and regulations, he's got all kinds of forty B regulations, he's got the codification project, you know, going on. So, I mean, I would suggest you call a meeting, I mean, you're, you're representing the board and say, hey, guys, you know, what are you doing, what do you wanna do? I mean, wanna start there, start the process. So, that's up to you, you're representing the board, so I would say you do it.
Yeah.
Why hasn't the meeting been held?
Discussions about this before, that, you know, we would work with, with the town administrator to get this company, this committee up and running. So that's how it was left. With the last, I guess, discussion of the goals.
Okay, let's, let's move along here, so under. Let me just sort of look at everything here, under Rich's three, he had the recruit, the senior personnel, key senior personnel. Now, I know that was something that we talked about early on, it was something that was discussed. In the interview process, so it was something that Ari knew before he even got here. That, you know, we needed. A, a few, you know, he knew when we got here from the interview process that our treasurer, you know, was an interim. And we needed a planner, and, 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 so I do think that should be, you know, one of the. Should be on this list, recruit key senior personnel, and also because it's taken up a bunch of his time actually doing it. So I don't know how we don't say it was an important goal. Does anyone agree or disagree with that statement? Rich? It's your, it's your item, so.
Well, I mean, well, God, it was very important to make sure that we got the right people in place. You know, and I can tell you, he spent hours and hours, you know, on that, you know.
Yep.
Job descriptions and interviewing and, and all that stuff, so I mean, you had three or four key, four positions that are key there.
All right, so I have that as a number three, we're all in agreement as that for a number three, right?
Fine, I just, you know, I, here's my level of frustration, we discussed this back in May. We're in January of twenty twenty-two, and we're discussing goals that we're setting for the town administrator. Or are going over and selecting the goals for the town administrator that are. Already met, so we should have started, and I'm, I'm hoping that going forward with this, this coming year, that we set our goals ahead of time. And not post.
You're absolutely correct, you're absolutely correct, Lorraine. It's, we've had a lot of work going on and everything, and this should have been done, but I was hoping to get it done in August. And after that night, I just couldn't revisit it. For a little bit, but you know what, that's why I said, if something new comes up, we have to give Ari the opportunity to speak on it. Because he's only got like four months, so I'm not opposed at all to reinvigorating the economic development committee. I just, you know, don't know how we get that done in a short amount of time, knowing that. When I even reached out to them, when Brian was still on the board, I only heard back from one person, I couldn't even get anyone else to respond to me. So it's at the point right now where you have to start at ground zero with that and figure out who even wants to be on it, is anyone appointed to it? Has anyone taken an oath for it, so I think, you know, I, I'm not saying it's not important. But I think we can sort of work on that in a different way. So. I know that the policies that Rich is speaking of, I know we spent a lot of time doing the financial policy. I know that, you know, Frank and has spent a lot of time doing, you know, other policies, use policies, whatever. Is that what you're talking about with that, Rich?
Yeah, well, and also, you know, he, he presented to us, working with the town clerk, you know, the updating of the. Whatever that manual was called, and I thought he did an excellent job with, with the town clerk. And Lorraine asked us, asked him to provide job descriptions of every single board and committee. This process is for people who have already got elected or got appointed, it's not people who. Are looking for these jobs, and, you know, that, that's why that thing should have been approved a couple of months ago, there's no reason why. I, I just think it's a waste of time to provide, you know, job descriptions for every single board, you know, and committee, that's a ton of work.
You know, it's not necessarily a job description, it's just a, information about what it is, I mean, this document. Can be used for folks that are elected, as well as folks that are interested in being elected or appointed to positions. But if they don't understand what the. Position is all about, you know, it just had to be a, a brief description about, you know, what's, what's involved.
That's all, if you, if you go to the website and you click on any one of these positions. It gives you a brief write-up.
Well, I just think it should be included in the document.
I don't see why it has to be included in the document, so, you know, it's nothing to do with the document, that, but I mean, he's spent a lot of time on that.
Right, I know, I know, and, and, and in one way, shape, or form, we did give him that sort of direction. So when it comes to doing a review, we should at least be able to say, you know, he wasn't doing work that we didn't ask for. Because we did, and I guess even though this is sort of going backwards. You know, we still need to have this sort of list, and you're right, Lorraine, going forward. You know, the previous boards of selectmen, Tracy reminded me, used to do priorities and, you know, everything else. So you're right, as soon as we're done with this, then we need to work on this for next year. But we can't really work on it for next year until we figure out, you know, what, what we've asked the town administrator to do. In the last year, so, so we need two more. Or we can change the amount of them that we have, we can amend that vote, one or the other. So if everyone wants to leave it at three or four, and then we just work forward with new goals for the calendar twenty twenty-two year. We can do that, or we can just try to put. Two more on here that were things that we actually asked the town administrator to work on.
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
This is necessarily something you've asked me to do, but something I've had to do and it's taken a good amount of time, which is management of our COVID response. Cares Act funding, as well as planning for ARPA, those are all, those are all pretty sizable. Time sucks in terms of, in terms of understanding the, the regulations and the rules and figuring out the strategy going forward. As well as doing best we can to spend as much as we can of the Cares money before it runs out.
Yeah, and I think that we had talked about that back in August too, like, you know, that the ARPA money. We're gonna have to figure out, especially with the county, the way they're doing things, so I actually think that should be, you know, another one of these goals. Because ARPA is gonna carry us through, what, twenty twenty-four, or, so I do think it should be on this short. Sort of short-term goal here for this year, but also going forward, the projects that are gonna go forward. So if you see under number five on the list that Ari made. You know, he does have determine the future path for economic development committee, which is the one that Lorraine had mentioned back in August and tonight. But underneath, he has developed the process considerations for ARPA, so I think that. You know, while that is not going to be complete, I think, you know. We need to make that an item because it's gonna keep being an item for the next couple of years, so.
Fortunately.
Yeah, so is anyone.
Always come up, though, that we'll have to, I mean, it's COVID and it's ARPA money now, I mean, who knows what could come next year? And, and, you know, our town administrator will just have to respond to that, so I think that that goes in, not necessarily goals. But I think that that's in, you know, the review of performance and, and, you know, what was accomplished. So, I mean, goals are supposed to be set, that this is what this board would like to see happen. Yes, the buildings, I do recall being on there, and I do recall the, you know, the insurance, but those were already, you know, in motion. So I'm glad that they, you know, have been addressed, but again.
It was just a suggestion, it's fine.
Yeah, you know what, Lorraine, they technically really weren't in, in motion, all of those things, so. Listen, if you want my honest opinion, I, I would break out the infrastructure and say, you know, historic town library. Voiceover IP, I would break them out, and there's my six right there, or five of those, and fifty fifty health insurance, I'm just trying to, you know. And you know what, the longer we discuss this, and the more, you know, we don't get along here, then we're just prolonging this problem. And I see a problem coming up for the twenty twenty-two, the reason why we're here four months before the review is because we haven't been able to get along. So.
Now, I disagree with you there, I just don't think that we've had, you know, a healthy discussion on it, just, we should just set the, the tone. This is what we have to accomplish and, and get it done, that's all.
Well, I, I suggested, Madam Chair, I suggested going way back, Ari presented the goals. Back in April to us, before he was even hired.
Right.
And so then he modified them to make suggestions that we gave to him. I'm okay with the goals that have already been presented, and I just don't think we should add any more goals now. Until, for the last four months of the, for his, his.
Well, I agree that we really shouldn't add anything new, but. So. Rich, if you wanna make that motion, we can make a. Rich, if you want to make that motion, we can make a motion and, you know, that's more than six. So.
It's fine with me. You know, I don't know if you want to read them back or you want to make that motion. It's fine with me.
Um, I don't have that part in front of me. I have five thousand other papers, but.
I know, Ari, you've put together a very, you know, after the last meeting you had put together, or last discussion, not last meeting, on this topic, you had put together, um, a list, and I'm, I'm looking for that list now too. Um.
I have it. I can share a screen if you like.
Could you do that, please?
Sure. You're talking about this list, right?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. The one you haven't mentioned so far was number four. The other ones you've mentioned, at least in part, in some form or another. And then economic dollars, number five. Can we reduce the size so you can get the whole screen there? Oh, I'll make it a little. That's too small. I know, that's worse. I'm trying. That's a little better. Okay, that's the best I can do.
Yeah, I, I'm happy with, with what's on there. Again, I just, I, I just wish we had voted on this earlier in time, you know? That's all.
So you're happy with this list back in August?
This came back, that Ari put this together post-meeting, after our discussion.
I sent it to you the day after the meeting.
Yes, and we never brought it back up.
Wow.
Okay, so, so we voted on six. We can amend that or we can just undo that vote and just say this list that's in front of us.
I'm fine with this. I'm fine with this because I can see that it touches upon the key elements of what we had talked about, each one of us.
Okay, and the new concept, which it's not totally new, but because you brought it up in August, Lorraine, it's determine a future path for the Economic Development Committee. It doesn't say that, you know, everything has to be in place by the date of, you know, the review. It's determine a future path. That could just be plans for, um, you know, re, revamping that group. So, okay, so, um, I will step down and make a motion that we, uh, withdraw the six items on the list. Does anyone want to second that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera, I.
Baby and I. Now, I will step down and make a motion that we approve this list. FY twenty-two Board of Selectmen Town Administrator Goals that was, uh, created by Ari after our meeting in August. It has number one, two, three, four, five. Anyone want a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera, I.
Baby and I. Okay. So, that's what we're working with. Now, going forward, I need.
Stop, share.
Okay, going forward, I will, um, sit down and figure out, I know we have, um, a couple of options for doing the actual review, but I will work on that um, and get that to you. But in the meantime, going off of that list, uh, or creating a new list, we need to come up with the new goals for twenty twenty-two. Can everyone have something like that ready within the next? The twenty-fourth is a pretty busy meeting, isn't it?
The budget meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I would suggest, um, so respectfully, I would suggest that, um, you get a look at my, at the proposed budget.
Yep.
In the sense of what you're gonna do for the budget. And that should help inform the goals you set going forward.
Okay, so the next meeting after the twenty-fourth, the next regular selectman's meeting, not budget meeting, regular selectman's meeting, we will add an agenda item on the goals for twenty twenty-two calendar year.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I think that's too early.
Okay.
You ought to do it in April, you know, at the earliest, and not do it now. I mean, because it's, like I said, there's so much stuff going on right now that.
I know. I'm just trying to make everyone happy, Rich.
I mean, there's, oh. I'm not difficult because I agreed to those goals.
I know. You know, I know, I agree. I'm the chair. I let this go too far. I am not gonna blame anyone else for that. Ari asked me repeatedly since August if we want to put it back on the agenda, but, um, you know, we had some busy meetings and I just didn't want to get into this discussion. So, you know, tonight was a light night, so we filled the last forty minutes with this. So.
You're gonna have your budget, you're gonna have your, your, your budget pretty much worked through by the end of February into March. I, I respect, I think that'd be a good time for you to talk about goals for the year.
Okay, so in the meantime, each selectman can sort of be, you know, keeping their mind open to what they may or may not want to see. Okay? Sound good? Everyone?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, also, under old business, uh, we have this letter, um, that the, uh, Lakeville Arts Council sent, I'd like to read it, um, to Boston Tavern. Um, they said, I'm writing to you as a representative of the Lakeville Arts Council to compliment you, Boston Tavern, and specifically Heather, for the professional manner in which the council was treated throughout the process to use Loon Pond Lodge this past weekend for our holiday event. The initial process began with Josh. We found Josh to be very accommodating also. Um, he was pulled away for other duties at Boston Tavern, which reassigned Heather to us. So Heather was also the manager on duty Friday evening and Saturday during our event. She was pleasant. She listened. She always returned an email or a call. Um, she says, I also have to compliment your organization on the lovely presentation of goods that we purchased, coffee cookies and pastries. So I am writing to report that our first experience working with Boston Tavern as the management company for the town of Lakeville was a positive one. So thank you to you, Josh, and especially Heather. That's from, uh, Joanne, up home, Lakeville Arts Council member. Um, so, you know, they've been through a lot of different people and everything, so I'm pleased to report that it sounds to me like, you know, um, Boston Tavern is treating, you know, especially our own folks really well. And that's, you know, that's, I, I, I like that. That's great. They do a lot of events, so, um, anyways, any other old business?
Um, I don't know if it's all business, but I'd like to discuss one of the, uh, other items on the agenda, please.
Yep.
Um, you just, uh, brought up the, uh, the nice letter that, uh, they sent about Boston Tavern. Um, and there's also a letter there that's talking about, um, lights for the adjacent, Loon Pond Lodge, uh, additional lighting and so forth and so on.
Yeah.
It's funny because I went to that there event, which was, was very, very nice. And I come out of the, out of the building and I said, where's the lights? Why aren't the lights turned on? There's lights that already exist there. And, uh, what happened from what we understand, and this was about a year or so ago, that, um, when they were putting in the fiber, they, uh, they cut the, uh, the wiring for the, uh, the electricity for these lights. Um, we did get a quote, you know, I know that, uh, Nate Darling got a quote of thirty-five hundred dollars to fix it. And I just don't, I assumed that it was taken care of, but I guess it hasn't been. Um, and we should do this as soon as possible. Because, I mean, this, you know, there, there's definitely a problem with those lights, but there's, there's a bunch of lights that already exist there that, you know, can be used. I know there's a couple of streetlights there, but they're not doing the job for the parking lot.
So, you took, uh, Rick, since you told me about that last week, I have spoken with Nate. And we're gonna, he, I told him we really need to get that going and he, he under, he agrees, so.
Okay.
Okay.
The, the other thing that's in this letter, and I know nothing about what, what's being asked for, but I, uh, I always thought that there was some kind of a, um, a, um, speaker system, an amplifier system already in, you know, Loon Pond Lodge. Now, um, so I'm not sure, you know, exactly what, but this probably should be mentioned, you know, to the park commission. Um, in most cases, when a wedding is being done, the band brings their own, you know, amplifiers, so they want to use their own equipment. But there definitely should be some kind of a microphone system or something in that building. So, um, I guess when you get a chance, Ari, you should probably talk to, uh, Joe Caush, the chairman, and see if this, if it does exist. I think there's something that exists there.
Yeah.
There is something that's there, yeah. It's definitely, because I've attended meetings there where they've had, um.
Yeah, I've, I've been in there. I've been in there for, for friends before. I know there's some kind of pieces.
Okay, so it must be just a case where they're not utilizing what should be utilized. And I guess the last thing is that, uh, you know, Ari is, uh, gonna, you should say this on your own, Ari, that he's gonna be, um, applying for a Mass Historical Commission, uh, grant for, uh, fund projects for something to do with historical buildings. So thank you on that.
Yeah, we have a couple eligible buildings in town. It's a fifty fifty match, so I thought, I'm looking at the, um, uh, the townhouse would be a good, uh, uh, down roof project would be a good, good, uh, good thing to look into. So I have Nate and Christina working on that.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right, Lorraine, anything else?
Not tonight.
Okay, um, so that takes us to any other business, any other business, going once, going twice. All right, if that's it, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Uh, the camera, I.
And Fabian, I. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Tracy.